I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P. M. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Nishanabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of A'Jibwe, Saginaw, Black River, Swan and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over two hundred years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Nishanabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, please, please take the roll.
Commissioner Bush is absent. Commissioner Chapman is absent. Commissioner Ekay?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Winger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Olzager?
Here.
Mayor Perspacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Since we have a quorum, we will continue. We're going to start out with proclamations and presentations, and it looks like we have an introduction of three paid-on-call firefighters and the swearing-in.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to introduce three of our new paid-on-call firefighters. It's nice to have three all at one time. I'd like to introduce them to you this evening first. This is Andy Foster, Eli Walker, Jordan Van Avery. Jordan and Eli are are new to the fire service, so they'll be brand-new cadets in taking firefighter one and two programs. Andy has some experience on another fire department in our county, and he has some of the training, so we're going to get him back into shape and getting back on the end of that hose as soon as we can. But we're really excited to have them. As you know, we're still struggling with numbers, but we're working really hard to recruit some new people. Gentlemen, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States the laws of the state of Michigan and the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of paid-on-call firefighter to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Welcome.
Do you guys want to say something?
I'd just like to say it's an honor, and I want to do the best I can for you guys. And I really want to thank you so much for having me here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm really excited to start. This has been an ambition of mine for quite a while.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I also would like to reiterate what Joe Man said. I've been a longtime public servant and looking forward to continue that with the city of Mount Pleasant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have the introduction and swearing-in of a new police officer.
Good evening, commissioners. It is my honor to introduce to you our newest police officer for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tyler Hall. Tyler comes to us from Saginaw County, where he was a deputy sheriff for six years. While he was there, he was an accident reconstructionist. He was a field training officer, deputy sheriff, and most recently, he was a detective in the detective bureau. He is a graduate from Grand Valley State University, where he obtained his bachelor's degree, and we are excited to have Tyler and look forward to all that he will do to serve the city of Mount Pleasant. All right, Tyler, if you'll face me, raise your right hand. I, Tyler Hall, do solemnly swear
I, Tyler Hall, do solemnly swear
that I will support, defend, and uphold
that I will support, defend, and uphold
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
the laws of the state of Michigan
laws of the state of Michigan
and the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant
the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant
to the best of my abilities
to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Tyler. You are now a certified police officer for the city of Mount Pleasant.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank everyone who had a process, hand in the process of me in the hiring process. I'm extremely grateful for the opportunity to serve and police the community of Mount Pleasant.
Thank you. You're welcome. Commissioner, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I hope that we accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes. Yes. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. At this time, we will open up the floor for public input on agenda items. If you are in the public and you'd like to speak on anything that is on the agenda tonight, you may step to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address once you enter the meeting, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom and no one else.
Okay. We just cleared out all of the audience. Yes, you can move forward if you'd like. Yes, there's plenty of room. So I don't see anyone in the audience at this time, so we will close the public input. And we will move on to receipt of petitions and communications. Manager, dissent.
Received petitions and communications this evening includes the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received and minutes from the traffic control committee from December.
We're going to move on to the consent items. Are there any consent items that the commission would like removed from the consent and moved into the actual agenda? Okay, not seeing none. Manager, dissent.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held March twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, approval of the minutes from the closed session held March twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, approval of the minutes from the special meeting held April one, two thousand twenty-four, consider contract with Sunrise Assessing Services for assessing services, receive proposed two thousand twenty-five through two thousand thirty capital improvement plan, and set a public hearing for May twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four on the same. Consider the establishment of a Mission Street Corridor Plan Steering Committee. Consider resolution authorizing a two thousand twenty-four Michigan State Housing Development Authority MI Neighborhood Program Grant Application, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Is there a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
I move to accept the consent items as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're moving on to new business to consider the purchase of two police pursuit vehicles. Manager, dissent.
So the city commission is requested to authorize the purchase of two two thousand twenty-four Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicles from Berger Chevrolet in Grand Rapids for a total cost of one hundred three thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. The vehicles would be purchased through the MI Deal State Pricing Program, which provides the lowest price that a municipality can typically receive. The purchase also requires a budget amendment of eight thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars. We do have with us this evening Assistant Director of Public Safety, Brandon Bliss. He's here to answer any kind of questions that the city commission may have.
All right. Are there any clarifications that are needed at this time?
I just have a question. As we're purchasing two new vehicles, are there two that are being taken out of service?
Yes, we have two vehicles currently that we expected to last a little longer, but due to repairs, we have, there are two out of service currently that need to be replaced.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Winger?
Why this type of vehicle?
Couple of reasons. We've, right now, we have the Ford Explorer as our patrol vehicle. The two that are out of service have eighty thousand miles on them. We typically expect those vehicles to last around a hundred thousand, give or take a little bit. They haven't lasted as long as we would like. That's about an extra year of service for each vehicle, the twenty, twenty thousand miles. I think it's time to try a different vehicle honestly that has a good rating, and then the Chevy Tahoe also has about eighteen cubic feet more space in the rear. And as police work evolves, it seems like we have more and more equipment that we're carrying in the back of the vehicle. And an example would be we get to an accident scene, and we have traffic cones, and we're moving stuff to get to the cones. So I think it would just suit us better having a bigger vehicle also.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I just needed to make sure I have clarity on what you said happens to the two vehicles that are being replaced. Deputy mayor asked what happens if, when you replace two vehicles, does that mean that you're taking away the other two? So I wasn't sure, I didn't hear clearly what you said happens to them.
Yeah, typically, they reach the end of life for mileage to where the repairs are costing more than feasible. The two that we currently have are out of service. We're not even using them because they are, both need repairs that are more expensive than what the vehicle is valued at.
So you don't donate them or send them somewhere to be, you know, salvaged or recycled?
Typically, if they're in service, and maybe this will happen with the ones that are no longer running, but they get, the city auctions them off.
Okay, that's the question that I'm asking.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't clear, I just, thank you though.
Are there any other questions? Okay, not seeing any other questions. I will entertain a motion.
My move that we accept the new business as presented.
Does that include the budget amendment?
Yes, with the budget amendment as recommended.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say yes. Yes. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right. We're going to move on to announcements on city-related issues and new business. This is where the commission brings forward information that they would like looked at or would like the city to know, events that are happening, such as festivals or things like that. Is there anything that the commission would like to bring forward? Commissioner Winger?
Yeah, something I wanted to just put an idea out there for my fellow commissioners before and staff as we're working on our goals and objectives for two thousand twenty-five. I started following, last year, I started following along with the city of East Lansing. They were developing a youth commission for their city. So it is a commission, I'm not certain of the total number of participants, but ages fourteen to eighteen of resident, either students or young people resident in the city or attending school, who then have the opportunity to just comment on whatever topic that they might be interested in taking on. I know in conversation with the staff at East Lansing, they've focused a lot on environmental issues, and I know that the staff there has talked very highly of the work that they've started doing. It's only been a couple of months now. It started in January, I believe, of two thousand twenty-four that they started meeting. But I think that's something that here at the city of Mount Pleasant, we could work on. I think investing in our youth, our younger people, and giving them opportunities to engage in the city helps build a better relationship with the community, and I think that would be a really valuable aspect for us as we look to perhaps increase volunteerism or just, again, grow our population and encourage and show young people that there is opportunities here in the local community. So just something I'd want to discuss further with my fellow commissioners and staff, and again, something that I think we could discuss further as we're working on our goals and objectives for two thousand twenty-five. East Lansing is the tenth municipality, I believe, in Michigan to take on this kind of project, and I'm looking for more examples of how other cities have gone about doing this. So, thank you.
On that same vein, that's something I got to do as a youngster.
Oh, yeah. That's really cool.
Very nice. Yeah, I think that engaging the youth is very important for, if nothing else, to help them understand how the city runs and give them that understanding of the responsibilities and the things that happen and how one person with an idea can make a change.
That's true. I'm glad that you brought this up, Commissioner Winger, because I think in the goal planning session with the city manager, we addressed something, the possibility of, you know, something like this, developing a youth program or actually even an internship, you know, that that could bring, you know, young people, students, you know, to city hall. So something almost in the nature of the city academy, you know, that we do for residents. You know, it is important for the next generation who take over the mantle from us to understand how, you know, government works, because hopefully, you know, they'll do the work that we are doing or that we haven't done, you know, and that's important.
Is there anything else the commission would like to bring forward?
This, this is not necessarily city-related, but it is important in terms of, in light of what is happening around us. April marks the thirtieth anniversary of the genocide in Rwanda. Actually, it was yesterday, during which about a million people were killed over a period of a hundred days. So it is important for us to be aware of, you know, these kinds of, you know, situations where hate actually, you know, governs people's lives and causes human beings to do, to engage in acts of mass atrocity, so that hopefully we don't have, something like this will never happen in our communities. And as the city of Mount Pleasant commits itself to being inclusive and welcoming, it's important for us to pay attention to the ways in which actions that we take, either, you know, by virtue of attention to the ways in which actions that we take, either, you know, by virtue of governing or just simply as people who live in our communities, can have tremendous impact on people who live in our communities and also, you know, our neighbors, just simply, just tremendous impact on our lives. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else the commission would like to bring forward? Not seeing none. We are going to move on to our second round of public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to come to the podium and state with a message, a statement saying something on the agenda or non-agenda, things that are happening around that you'd like to talk about, you may come to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be brought into the meeting and asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No emails.
Okay, no emails? Okay. And not seeing anybody has snuck in since last time I looked out in the audience. I'm going to say that there's probably nobody that's going to come forward to the podium. At this time, we do not, I'm going to close the public comment. We do not have a work session or a closed session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:20.